We are city councils coming into session. We begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I believe that Councilwoman Capina is in charge.
Yes, thank you, sir. Please join me this morning in welcoming Shirley Ann Lima as she gives our invocation. Shirley is a longtime West Tampa resident who is passionate about all things Tampa. She is a retired loan officer from Suncoast Credit Union and a huge Tampa Bay Rays fan. More importantly, she's my sister. Welcome Shirley. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Almighty God, you are Creator and our Sustainer. You are Light and our Fortress. You are Wisdom and our Strength. We ask for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work today. We ask these things in your powerful name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Thank you Shirley.
Thank you.
Suarez, Cohen, Meniscoco, Capina, Miranda, Vieira, Reddick.
Okay, and now we begin with our commendation for Police Officer of the Month, taken up by our good friend, Mr. Charlie Miranda.
Honorable Chairman Tampa City Council, honorable members of Tampa City Council, my pleasure this morning to be here with a detective who has earned his stripes. Not only is Police Officer of the Month, but when you hear what the detective has done, Detective Shane D. Gudoree. It's unbelievable the work he's done to clean up something that is so... I don't even have a word for it because individuals that do these types of crime, I just don't understand society anymore. But he chose to do this job, and he chose to do it for the betterment of all of us, and thank God he did. And I'll have Chief Dugan now come forward and make the presentation, speak what he did to make sure that we understand why we have Police Officer of the Month. It's not just one Police Officer of the Month. It's not just 12. It's an everyday job of 24/7, 365, to clean our city as clean as possible from individuals who are doing type of hideous crimes against the very young. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning, Council Brian Dugan, Chief of Police. This morning, we have Officer of the Month Shane Gudoree. He's a detective. I have to kind of give you a disclaimer. I've had to clean up some of these stories as much as I can, and then when I'm done, you're probably going to say, "I thought you said you cleaned them up." They're very descriptive. He deals with sex crimes on children, so I'm going to skip over some of the... as much as I can. It won't give justice to the tough job that he has, but I just think you'll see what I mean. In February 2018, Detective Shane Gudoree decided to transition from patrol corporal into an investigative role as a detective to broaden his skills. During the last year, he has made numerous arrests, and most notably is being recognized for the large number of capital sexual battery arrests involving children under 12 years old. He has taken many violent offenders off the street and has been able to obtain numerous confessions. He utilizes prior cases as evidence, writing search warrants to obtain video evidence, and utilizing good investigative measures to develop supporting evidence. In May, he arrested a 23-year-old for having sex with his former girlfriend's children. The defendant was charged with capital sexual battery and several thorough incriminating interviews. In June, Shane obtained a confession from an 18-year-old for having sex with a six-year-old victim. Video evidence was recovered of the offense. The defendant was charged with capital sexual battery and sentenced to 15 years in prison and 15 years of probation. In September, he obtained a confession of a seventeen-year-old who used his cellphone to record himself having sex with a seven-year-old victim. The defendant is now serving a capital sexual battery. In December, he learned that he and Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office were investigating the same defendant. They worked together to obtain a confession that he had sexually battered a child from the age of three to nine years old. Both agencies charged him with capital sexual battery. He made another arrest in December where two sisters were being molested by their mother's boyfriend for four years. He was arrested for sexual battery and aggravated child abuse. And like I said, that's the cleaned-up version of this. Despite the challenges, Shane has excelled at making arrests on cases nearly impossible to approve. He is a tremendous asset to the Sex Crimes Unit and has been selected as Officer of the Month for February 2019. Congratulations.
Good morning, Council. Abe Carmack, President of the Tampa Police and Members Association. Joining me is our Vice President Darla Portman. First and foremost, thank you for what you do every month and every day to support the membership chief. Thank you for selecting a member and staff and his chain of command. You know, you've heard what Detective Gudoree did to get this award, but every day, he goes out of his way to help others. He also has firsthand seen him being involved with our Critical Incident Stress Management team that comes out when officers are in distress, and I've watched him firsthand deal with that. So he just doesn't give comfort to the victims of crimes. He also is there giving comfort to officers in their times of need as well. So we appreciate everything he does. But most importantly, what he does every day, you know, Facebook's a great thing, but he's a great dad, and I watch him mentor his daughter in teamwork, right, team building and doing those kinds of things. And for that, you know, he's just a great, great person, and I appreciate all you do to show us a better way. And thank you for that. We'd like to issue or give you a watch.
Cool. Awesome. Thanks, Abe. Appreciate it.
Morning, Council Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford. I don't know what to say. I wish I could give you more than what I'm giving you, but beyond half, the Curry family and myself would like to give you a brand-new car.
All right, I'll take that. Thank you very much, sir.
And we have a new presenter today, Council. It's Bob and Dustin from Casper McDonald Corporation.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, City Council members, for allowing us to be here today. Detective, it's our honor to be here. We have a rich history of giving back and supporting the city, the county, the schools, and especially our friends in law enforcement. And with all that we do and hearing the testimony about what you have done, we feel minimized in comparison and thankful for what you have done and are going to continue to do in this city. We brought a small token of appreciation. There's an assortment of gifts in there for you and some family members, and we hope that you enjoy them, and we see you under the arches. Thank you very much.
Morning, Council Mike McArthur, Steps Towing Service. Detective, congratulations. You're a true hero in our community, and we appreciate everything you do. On behalf of Todd Step and Steps Towing Service, I present you with a $50 Bounce Pro gift card and a night out with you and your family in our company. Enjoy it. Take some time off.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Council Carlos Ramos with the Tampa-Hillsborough Expressway Authority. Detective, thank you so much for the work that you do. I know it's incredibly difficult, but I know we feel safe having you doing this kind of work, so we appreciate it very much. And to show our appreciation, we have a gift card to the ranch house on Gandy Boulevard. So I hope you can take your family out and enjoy a nice night.
We will. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Council Mary Lou Bailey. I'm here today on behalf of Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park. Thank you for your service. You're awesome. I've been to the Citizens Police Academy, so I know how tough your work is, at least the sampling of it. But the work that we heard about you doing is just breaking my heart. I have two daughters that are nine and 10, and it just must be horrible what you deal with every day. So to do something fun, we're giving you a family membership to Zoo Tampa for you and your family for the whole year, and it's admission and also special events. And it's provided to you on behalf of the citizens who volunteer on the board of Zoo Tampa because we wanted to say thank you to you and the whole force. So have a great time, and I hope you love animals and have some fun.
I do. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council Michael Kilgore with the Gonsmore Family Restaurants. Thanks for all that you do. We have a $100 gift card to the Columbia. Take your family. Have a good time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good morning, Council Pete Raby with Busch Gardens. As always, thank you for your continued support of law enforcement and for allowing us to be part of today's proceedings. I've had the opportunity to know Shane for quite a while, and you know, based on the bio that Chief Redd probably doesn't tip the iceberg or tip of the iceberg of what he really does or what he exemplifies as a human being. And he's a great cop, a great detective, but he's probably a better human being. Thank you for what you do, Shane, and on behalf of Busch Gardens Tampa Bay, there's four tickets to our party.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council Leigh Van Naam with Tampa Theater. Detective, thank you so much for your service in our community. We need more people like you. This is a gift membership for you and your wife and some candy for your daughters. If you can come and visit us on Franklin Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Morning, Council Brian Ford with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Chief Dugan, detective. As a father, I can't even put into words. Your story is unbelievable. So we have a little tradition out at One Buck, and we give away game balls, and I think you're very deserving of a game ball.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much first to the council members.
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much first to the council members for affording us a forum for this Officer of the Month. Obviously, I want to thank my sergeant, who put me in for this award, and all the chiefs and executive staff and majors that are responsible for selecting me. I realize that they have a lot of good police officers to choose from, so it's very humbling. I want to use this as an opportunity. I did bring, the Police Department, if you weren't aware, has a Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Bigs in Blue program that we mentor young children. And Maurice Carter is the little boy that I mentor, and so I wanted to bring him along with my daughter here to show them that hard work is recognized and that you guys provided us a forum to use this as a teachable moment. So thank you very much. Come on up. Come on up, Haven. So this is my daughter Haven, and this is Maurice. So 11, 11, did I get that right? How old are you?
Eight.
Eight. Both eight, but obviously, size is different, so. But anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition.
Detective Guday, on behalf of Tampa City Council, it's my pleasure to be here this morning to represent this combination to you, sir, on your outstanding job, which you do every day, 365 days. Not only you, all the officers of the Tampa Police Department. And this is a token to you from the citizens, and the work is here. This work is not finishing. This work continues every day because we have people in society that want to do these crazy things. Thank you very much for what you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Detective Cordray, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Very much.
You're welcome. That's more than you need to say, so.
And I wanted to join Councilwoman Kepine in saying thank you, Detective, for all that you do. You know, I think if anybody asks me why I support law enforcement, I'd ask them to take a look at the video of folks talking about you and what you do. Law enforcement is paid to deal often with humanity at their very worst, and you're always expected to be your very best during that time. And just what you do in dealing with children, it's, I couldn't begin to imagine the things that you have to do. And I salute you, I salute your family for supporting you because we know that a family is always supportive, and that's very, very important. I think about what I learned in Sunday School, what the Bible says about those who harm children, that it's better that, I think, something to the effect of they get a rock attached to their body and be thrown into the ocean or something. My Sunday School days are far from behind me, so to speak. I shouldn't say that, but you know what I mean. That sounded really bad. I still go to church. I still go to church. My kid days. That was off. That was off. But, yeah. Thank you. Really, thank you and God bless you for all that you do. I mean, I just, my hat's off to you, and that's a real understatement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Detective, thanks so much. I appreciate it. You know, Mr. Vier, of course, is, you know, the example of the old governor that said, "Why use one or two words when 30 or 40 will do?" Appreciate what you've done for us. And obviously, you know, ever since Dugan took over as chief, it seems like everyone has the same haircut as him that comes up here to get an award. I'm not sure why that is, but thanks for everything that you do. Obviously, it's a very tough job that you have to handle, and thanks for being a big brother and bringing Maurice over here. I think it's important that people get involved in the community and make sure that, you know, you cops are seen as people that are welcoming and a part of the community as opposed to just being there when the worst days of their, the worst times of their life happen. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I've been there, because I'm not doing it, so.
Good morning, Council. And it's a pleasure to stand before you and make this accommodation to a very special person, and that's Dylan Van Cuthy. Is he here? Thank you, sir, for being here. On behalf of the Tampa City Council, we would like to present this accommodation to you. As you, I'm trying to read this. Troop 45 of the Christ United, Christ the King Catholic Church, where you just achieved the rank of Eagle Scout.
Yes.
And from my understanding, that is a major achievement.
Yes, it is.
And it's just so honored for me to stand here and present this to you and wish that you move to the next rank, whatever that rank is, is wish that you move to the next rank. But it's not only a major accomplishment for you, but it's a major accomplishment for your family and the community that you live in. So on behalf of the Tampa City Council, we would like to present this accommodation to you and wish you much more success in the future.
Thank you.
All right, then turn this way. Don't get in the back. We'll just be up front. Okay. And I'd like for you to say something. Do you have your mother? Do you like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the City Council for giving me this beautiful plaque. And I'd like to also thank my family and all my mentors in scouting and everyone who's helped me along the way, whether it's my friends in scouting, outside of scouting, coaches that let me skip practice to go to Boy Scout meetings. And it's just, I mean, it's a long time coming, but I'd like to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan, what was your project at, your Eagle Scout project?
So there's the Victory Ship down in Channel Side.
Yep.
It's out in the sun all day, so there's a number of, there's a bunch of rust and worn-off paint. So I did, I picked the four cargo winches and the upper gun deck, and I decided to scrape off all the old paint and rust and repaint it. And I thought it would be an easy project. And it turned out being 30-plus hours of manual labor, not including like writing up the plans and everything else and just meeting. But I had an opportunity to get a bunch of paint. It was like $50 a gallon industrial-grade paint that I got from, I think it was Sun Paints and Coating. They just donated it all, and they said that I could come in the store, get whatever I need, and that they'd give it to me for whatever they like, they bought it for, so they're not even making any profit. And I was very thankful for them. Then everyone who came out, I had a bunch of volunteers, and it was a lot of fun.
Well, I'm sure you probably had a lot of members of the troop come out and help you out typically. That's the way it works with an Eagle Scout project. And you know, your next project could be, why don't you try and find out how you can air-condition the ship in the hole? Because they'll have events over there, and you cannot be there. Usually, it's so hot inside there, and I can't imagine how the sailors must have felt. But thank you for what you've done. You know, Christ the King is known as the place where most of the Eagle Scouts come from here in the city of Tampa. In fact, they call it sort of an Eagle Scout center. And I know that the amount of work you have to put into it and just the plans that you have to put in forward in order to go and make this project work is a lot of work behind the scenes. So thanks to everything you've done, and hopefully, you know, you go on to other things. Where are you going to school right now?
I'm planning on going to Florida State, but I'm at Jesuit High School right now.
You're at Jesuit? Okay, great. So you'll be graduating this year. We got, well, Mr. Miranda has grandchildren that are at Florida State. I have a son at Florida State, so I think you'll enjoy it up there. So just, you know, keep doing what you're doing, keep up the hard work, and you'll do fine for the rest of your life.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
What do you plan to major in?
I think management, but I want to go on to try to get a degree in law with real.
No comment. Good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to venture in again. Let's see. I'll venture in. I know. I, yeah, it's a tough week. No, just congratulations. Scouting is good values of patriotism and faith and family, and just congratulations. You know, the Eagle scouting is like the Navy SEALs of scouting, so it's very, very serious. So you've gotten accepted into FSU?
Yes, sir.
That's great. That is a big accomplishment. Getting into FSU, it is, it's tough. I mean, with the grades I got, they wouldn't even, you know, let me in there these days, trust me, when I was a kid. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Shively.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. And good morning. The Tampa City Council welcomes public comment at this time. If you're here to speak on a matter that is set on the agenda as a workshop, you will have the opportunity to comment after that workshop item. Each speaker is given three minutes. Please begin by stating your name for the record, and it is requested that your comments are not directed personally to a council member or staff member, but rather issues directed to the council as a body. City Council appreciates your cooperation in maintaining orderly conduct and proper decorum. Thank you.
Morning, Menzner. It's always good to see young people on the move and doing positive things. And it's always interesting to hear adults talk about they forgot their Sunday School values or Sunday School memories or something of that nature. That's very interesting because that means people are losing their values along the way. I have a story to tell. Last Thursday, I attended a play for my seven-year-old at his school. Gave his brother $10, his nine-year-old brother $10 for himself and $5 for his little brother. And later on, a couple of days later, went to check to see what happened, did he give him his $5 or not. He say, "No, Baba. I gave him the $10 because he did good in his play, and he deserved it." I think that's the characteristics that he's taken on independent of anything else in this rotten world around him. That's the values he hold there to himself, and that's a child. And to see us adults around here, adults, do-nothing members of this City Council, adults, that's elected to represent the people's interests, their constituents, and can never do so. When you request something of them, they can't even look into it if you're not a big developer or you're not in a downtown crowd or you're in a white crowd. And they have a certain kind of racial hatred that they don't care what happened or how it happened to African people. It was honorable to see the police officers here this morning because normally, they're giving away some garbage awards to some crooked police officers like Sarita Baker, like Detective Sarita Baker, crooked police officer. It was honorable to see a police officer here that say he's a mentor for the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program. That's very honorable. And what this City Council have to do is take on some honorable tasks and honorable duties and responsibilities. And when the man here talks about decor and the man there talks about somebody kissing his butt, and you supposed to be there to represent the people, that's not a good look. When the mayor's calling African women bitches and calling for the lynching of an African man, that's not a good look. New City Council, new mayor coming. We need better representation throughout this city. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Pastor William. Church is located 1112 East Scott Street, and I want to read some scriptures to you all first before I comment on anything because you all don't seem to want to hear nothing I got to say or hear anything this young man here has. Now faith is a certain thing and hopeful, but the evidence of things not seen, for by it all attain a good report. Through faith, we understand that the world was framed by the words of God, so that things which are seen are not made of things which do appear. By faith, Abel offered unto God a more excellent sacrifice than Cain, by which he attained witness that he was righteous, God testifying of his guilt, and by it being dead yet speaking. By faith, Ena was translated that he should not see death and was not found because God has translated him. For before his translation, he had this testament that he pleases God. But without faith, it is impossible to please him, for he that committed to God must believe that he is, and that he is rewarded them that diligently seek him. By faith, Noah, being warned of God of things not seen yet, moved with fear, preparing an ark to the saving of his house, by which he condemned the world and became hires of righteousness by faith. By faith, which he was called to go out into a place which he should receive after for inheritance, obeyed, and he went out, and not knowing whether he went. You know, everything we do in this world, in order for us to please God, we got to do it by faith. And I'm the type of person like this here. I worship God by faith. I praise God by faith. I glorify God by faith. And we are here only because of God and nobody else. I don't care how much kind of riches you have, if it wasn't for God, we wouldn't be here. So we got so much to thank God for. And I want to tell you this also. You know, the teacher allows to carry a gun now at school. When I was going to school, we had prayer, and you weren't hearing about nobody killing up a bunch of innocent kids. But nowadays, they want to teach you to carry a gun, and they won't only be killing up the enemy, they be killing up themselves and innocent children. Some people don't even know how to use gun. And we have to understand, once we put God, and God, remember, God used to be in the Ten Commandments, he used to be here in the courthouse, but now they snatched that down. They don't want to represent God under no circumstance, but thanks be to God, we still here to, some people are still here to speak the truth and respect God Almighty. And I got to tell you all this here. This man here should be honored above all the policemen and everybody else. This man should be honored in more ways than one, and you know what, I'm in the City Council ought to be glad to honor. Thank God. God bless all of you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? All right, we go through the workshop.
Good morning, Council. Catherine Coyle, Planning and Development. It's been quite an emotional morning. I'm playing the role of Jean Duncan today, just so you know. The motion is related to transit-oriented development and city-owned properties. In bigger picture, I want to take you back just a minute. Bigger picture, the items that I've provided you this morning is a two-page memo that is a brief summary of what our comprehensive plan currently has in it related to transit-oriented development policies. And I wanted to share with you the exciting news that the HART and Cooperation and Supporting Partnership with the city and the Planning Commission and the MPO were awarded a TOD Planning Grant in the amount of $800,000 for us to go back and look at our policies and the structure that we have for floor area ratios, public realm improvements, amenities, support facilities, and take a really hard look at those policies and then move through all the way to typologies for station area, stations and station areas. You'll note on the second page of the memo, there's three basic phases of the study, Phase 1, 2, and 3. The first one, first phase is going to study the extension of the streetcar, and then the next two phases are going to study the two legs of HART's BRT up Nebraska and then out Fowler. There are four principal tasks, and there's excerpts there. I've included the actual summary on Tab 4 of the grant itself that we submitted. I did want to give a nod to Councilwoman Suarez. This is the second subcommittee, ad hoc committee, that HART has created recently. They had their kickoff meeting January 28. As I said, this is a new iteration of it. About eight or nine years ago, there was another one. or nine years ago, there was another one. No, not eight or nine years, I'm sorry, seven years ago. Seven, yeah, seven years ago. Apologize. It was about seven years ago. It was the first subcommittee on TOD. And Councilman Suarez, being part of the HART board, spearheaded that. And they've re-upped that again, and we had our kickoff meeting. And that subcommittee is going to basically oversee, interact with the project team on the grant, monitor its progress, go through the RFP that's going to come up. We have another meeting. We're going to meet every 60 days. There's another meeting. I've listed the dates in here. The next one is March, and then there's a follow-up one in May. The RFP will go out late spring, early summer, for consultants to come in and work with us on that. And it is about a 33-month project, which is going to be really exciting. The project itself is going to analyze everything that we do, and make sure that we're ready for the stations and the development that can come. Just to give you, by way of brief background, this is the vision map from your comprehensive plan. You'll notice this black dash line, kind of goes up along the main corridors. That is the future transit envelope. And that ties directly to the TOD policies and the framework in the comp plan, that once there's a fixed guideway system identified and funded, then there are land uses, densities and intensities that actually drop right on top. Yes?
You just said that was the transit envelope. So the transit envelope doesn't include the CSX corridor?
The future transit envelope does, yes. It goes all the way out to the
Well, it doesn't in the, it doesn't in the south. I mean, there's a CSX line that goes right through the peninsula. That's not included in this?
Yeah, it is not. South Tampa actually is the planning district, is not a growth district.
Oh, well, that's news to everybody.
Well, I mean, that is something that, that is actually something that'll be studied through the actual grant, to look at the policies and the framework that we have, and see if actually it covers everything that we need.
So that's, that's part of the scope of it?
Absolutely. We'd be looking everything, top to bottom, because it was adopted in January 2009.
So if the scope needed to be expanded to cover other pieces of the city, it would be?
Yes. There is going to need to be a little bit of an extension to the west as well of the current line, because it only goes to Boulevard right now. And it does need to go a little bit farther to the west, probably to Armenia, or even a little bit farther. But that is going to be part of the scope of the study, from the envelope on down. On Tab Two, and I noticed after it printed, that it's a little bit light, so I can email you a blown-up version of it. If you look at it online, you can actually read it pretty well, but I'll send you a blown-up version. This is mixed-use regional, community center, neighborhood, stations, employment centers. This table was created for the county and the city, knowing that transit obviously will connect eventually. So there's some in here that relate to Brandon and other areas in the county as well. They tie to our planning districts, they tie to mixed-use corridors, urban villages, and they have an increased density and intensity listed here that are a little bit above the comp plan, the future land use categories that we have. So those would drop automatically. That's the whole premise behind this, is that would drop automatically once the stations are identified. That's what's going to be analyzed, looking at the ridership of these, looking at the development that would support that ridership or increase it, and how to balance those two things, throughout whatever corridors there are. I did include the subcommittee agenda from January, and Tab Three. At the time, this is the Phase One Preferred Alignment Options for the streetcar. This is being refined currently with Transportation and their Streetcar Extension Project up to Palm. And then this is the BRT study routes, which are looking at Florida, Nebraska, and Fowler, up to UATC. And finally, as I mentioned, I did give you the summary on Page Four, that you can read in more depth, as opposed to just the excerpts that I put in the plan, or the memo. Finally, to get to the meat of what it was you technically asked for, I do have a list. What you have, the first copy, I asked Real Estate to essentially dump the list from their inventory. And I've spent the last many days going through it and trying, that's why it says PUD notes as well, trying to scrub it essentially for anything that happens to be a stormwater facility, or a ditch, or a bay bottom. Some of them are listed as submerged lands. There's a random assortment of lands in there. And some of them actually aren't even accurate. Some of the folio numbers have been combined. So as I went through each one, I found folios missing, and I realized that they had been combined with other folios. You'll notice it says URP on a lot of them. Those are uneconomic remainder parcels. Some of them are as narrow as a foot. And that executive order from 1990 establishes the rule that they are sold to the next-door neighbor, essentially. And I did it by, I organized it by zoning district, just for you to see. The maps that I've given you, these are, this is a quick stab at it, just to show you, because it's the whole city, essentially, when you look at the transit envelope. I gave you the center corridor, so you could see where the Nebraska BRT is. You can see these little tiny slivers in different parts. Let's see. Those are the parcels on the list. They literally are little chunks of land. And I just wanted to show you visually their proximity to the BRT, or proximity within the future transit envelope. So this is Seminole Heights, north of MLK on the first map. On the second map, you're going to the, just the south of that. So you've got Nebraska, MLK, Florida. And then at the bottom, you start to see the extension of the streetcar and the top of the streetcar in Ebor. And you'll notice that out in East Tampa, there are some parcels that are along that rail area. They are uneconomic remainders. They're odd-shaped lots, or narrow, or landlocked. You'll notice a lot of them are landlocked on the list as well. Some of the larger ones are landlocked. The third one, I think, gets to the HART, because it's actually downtown area, and that central area, as it bleeds into Harbor Island, Davis Islands, and that South Tampa section. And you'll notice that that's the streetcar with the alignment, preferred alignment, and then the BRT route coming in. The line here is going to the actual Marion Transit Center. We happen to own the underlying land. As far as transit-oriented development, I can tell you, I go a couple times a year on the TOD council with ULI, and Union Station is here. And those are opportunities that I've seen in other communities, where obviously those transit locations cannot, they can be more than just a transit stop. They can, we could look to partner and develop it in other ways. But that'll flush out through the actual station area typologies and designs, and through any partnerships that we form. Those are really the two big ones that happen to be under our ownership. A lot of, the rest of them are very small. So I'm available for any questions, if you have any?
Thank you. Kathy, thanks so much for this. Mr. Cohen and I were looking at and saying, wait a minute, aren't we supposed to get a list of properties now?
Yeah. I was trying to paint a picture first, and then, yeah.
And let me make, let me make sure, because obviously you mentioned that I've been involved with trying to talk about TOD for a long time.
For a very long time, yes.
And, you know, the list you have, when you say developable lands, meaning those that are already empty, not necessarily only those that are owned that might be converted into other uses. So as an example, there may be parking lots that are not listed on here. Isn't that correct? There's, I saw one on here. I didn't see that many.
There are a few parking lots, yes.
There's a couple few here and there. Okay. And there are some that's probably, I don't know if you had any here in the downtown area. There might be a couple in there, but I didn't see any.
The one at 1301 North Florida.
Okay.
It's a weird little lot. It's kind of fenced off. It's weird.
And I want to make sure, because Mr. Cohen asked a question about South Tampa and about the CSX thing. TOD, and correct me if I'm wrong, TOD is looking at those spaces and developable land that's available along a corridor. Am I correct about that? Part of the reason, when we did our first TOD study group back in 2012, we looked at the east-west corridor. And I said, why can't we do an east-west corridor? And Tony Garcia from, from Planning Commission said, there isn't enough empty spots that are not already developed. That's part of the reason why it's not part of the transit envelope in terms of TOD, if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. Because there's, there's only so many pieces of land that are not developed in, in South Tampa, you know, regardless of people that might want to build new homes or stuff like that. And when you're talking about density along corridors, you would have to change some of the underlying land use or zoning regulation in order to make sure TOD-
Typically, it intensifies a lot, yes.
And it intensifies it significantly. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that's the reason why they don't have South Tampa on there, because it's, there are less, there are less parcels that are available to be developed along the corridor itself.
And I understand your distinction. I was just pointing out, we have 5,000 units that are being built currently at Rattlesnake Point, for example.
Sure.
So they might, the fact that there's not vacant land there is not relevant to the fact that, in fact, there's a huge amount of density going there now already. So people are going to need to get in and out of there, and it needs to, at some point, be factored into.
You're correct. But that's an intensification on the West Side. If you're talking about an intensification along, south of Kennedy, that goes along the CSX tracks, then you're talking about a different issue, is what I'm saying. That's all, that's all I was trying to point out. Now, part of, part of what, when we look at these TOD projects, are you familiar with the Capitol Hill project that they're doing in Seattle?
I missed the Seattle trip, unfortunately. So-
Well, it's okay. I missed it too. It's not a big deal. I just, I read about what they did. And, you know, so they did, they put their staging area in order to build the station itself next to it. And then that staging area, once the, the station is developed, then is for affordable housing. I think they're doing 482 units.
I have the background data from the council. I can send it to you.
And so, and they're, and if I'm not mistaken, 42% of all the units are now going to be used, are going to have an affordability aspect of it, I think between 65 and 85% of AMI that you're allowed to reserve for that. And I think that probably is, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, it is a regulation or zoning regulation specifically for that. And that's where TOD and zoning and land use come into play, because now you're changing in order to make sure you intensify the use along the corridor itself. Let me ask you in terms of, you know, because we've talked about our land that we own. And TOD is a, is a process in which sometimes we have private owners that also want to be part of TOD projects. And then the city, or the, the transit system, or the county, might be a part of that too. As part of the grant, are you all going to look at also county-owned parcels, lands, because along that corridor, you know, HART owns these very small parcels that are part of, you know, their bus stops. And, you know, it's incredibly difficult, and, you know, we've used some eminent domain proceedings to try and get some of these pieces. Extremely difficult to purchase it from some, some of these landowners, because they're usually very small parcels, and they don't want to get rid of that, that piece, regardless of the kind of agreement they might have with them. How do you see us, as a city, looking at our land use in relation to the corridors, and then also in terms of those available parcels of land that might be owned by, let's say, a car lot, or other uses that are, you know, primarily parking or, or non-activated uses in those corridors?
So all of that is actually part of the evaluation. When we first start out with the inventory and analysis, it is typical that we'll pull all government-owned lands. We'll look at FDOT lands, because sometimes they have a repository of just vacant lands that they purchased for a right-of-way or something, and then didn't need it anymore, and it's just sitting in their bank. County lands, school board lands, anything that's out there, we typically look at that. And then we go through a process of looking at underutilized lands, which is what we typically call them. If we see, if we see parcels that have high-intensity zoning, or high-intensity land use, and it's got a thousand-square-foot building on it, and it's an old defunct car lot, obviously, that's an underutilized piece of land, especially when it's near a mixed-use corridor, or a rail corridor. And that, that's ultimately those kind of things that we'll bring together and look for those opportunities. I believe it's in Task Three, moving into Four in the grant, where we're actually going to start doing some of those mock designs of actual typical station area types. And in the first phase, like I said, we're going to be looking at the streetcar and extension. So we will be looking in the Palm Avenue area for that typical station type, which should be the community center station type, and looking at, basically testing the FARs and the densities with what's around there, the ridership numbers, projected ridership numbers that we're going to get in from that. And then also looking at what is essentially the max intensity and public amenities that'll be needed to be built in to connect those uses. It's a balance between the land use and the transit, ultimately, to make sure it works.
And-
And there's a large public engagement process that's with this.
And if I could, when you're talking about the study that we're doing now for the extension of the streetcar, there are, I think we've narrowed it down to two choices, two corridors. You're going to look at both those corridors as part of the study, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other, the other part of that, which is, when you're looking at a station, the development of a station, how, how large is that radius around the station do you look at for that kind of development? So as an example, you know, you're going to have TOD developed where it's activating the station. There is probably some kind of mixed use. There may be intensification in order for people to have apartments, or condos, or whatever else. And then, in addition, there's other changes that are going to be made around that station. What's that radius, though, from the station that you all usually look at to be a, a key part of TOD?
Typically, the most, we don't go larger than about a half a mile.
Okay. That's pretty large.
Yeah, it is. To pick up more of the bicycle, alternative modes of transportation, and then a quarter mile to an eighth of a mile for walking. And then looking at how that public realm is going to be developed, whether, all the way down to whether or not it's going to be tree-lined streets, or other types of shelters and stuff, because obviously we live in sun and rain. So we have to make sure we create the connections that people actually walk on and ride on.
Now, you're saying it's going to be a 33-month?
That's what it was scoped for, for the grant, yes.
Okay. And was it scoped prior to the passage of Offer Transportation?
Yes. We applied for it back in July of last year.
Is there any way, based on, on the timeframes that we have for monies coming into the city and to, into HART, that you could, that timeframe can be changed to make it quicker? I'm just curious.
Yeah. Chris Cochran, who is the Planning Manager now, Planning Manager, I think? Director, Planning Director at HART, he is actually working, we're working on trying to get back to the March meeting, and we are trying to speed up the scope as much as possible to get it out as quickly as possible, so we can start as quickly as possible.
Okay, terrific.
So yes. It's just, part of it, as I mentioned, is public engagement, because we obviously don't want to plan anything in a vacuum. We need to go out and talk to the people and the communities, and, and get their ideas and concepts, and try to fold in what, what they're willing to absorb, and how they see their own areas growing.
Well, I appreciate this. I'll be reading this. I may have some additional questions, but yeah, in my spare time, exactly, especially the next-
Yes. I, when I saw this, I thought, Gina Grimes. Oh, no, it's Kathy Coyle, those tabs.
It would have been bound.
Yeah, it needed to be bound and a little bit thicker.
I was going to put it in binders for you.
Budget cuts, got rid of the binders.
You know, I was telling Harry, Harry and I did a benchmark trip to Denver, and we saw what happens with those, the transportation stops.
Did you go to Union Station and that whole area there?
We went to Union, and we also went and saw what happens at the stops, all the building, all the residential. They have the opportunity to get more affordable housing, because it's further away, but they can get in that much faster. The other thing I want to say, and this has, you know, Offer Transportation and the money, I'm going to tell you something. February 16, the city of Tampa came to West Tampa, the corner of Cordelia and Glen. I'm living with my sister temporarily while my addition is being done. They made a hole in the street. They were, there must have been 10 of them, two huge trucks. I thought, great, they're fixing something. Well, they left the hole, they put up a sign, road closed, put a cone. It is still there. The water is in the hole, and you have to drive around it. All the, all the, the, the grass is all muddied up from the tires. It is, and I didn't take a photo, because I thought, well, today they're going to fix it. Every day I think they're going to fix it.
How long has that been, 3016?
I mean, that's not you. I'm saying it because- I mean, that's not you. I'm saying it because I am up to here. I really, I keep thinking, oh, they're going to come out. And I see a city truck come by and I think, oh, this is the day they're going to fix it. No, the hole is there. It's ridiculous that since February 16th, they blocked the street. They had trucks. There were people sitting around. It was really something to see. I wish I would have filmed it.
Did you happen to see which department it was or no?
Whoever works on the roads.
Well, that's, that's a lot of them. I can, I can look into it. I'm over right of way permitting, but other groups do their own thing sometimes.
I'm saying it because I want administration to hear it.
No, I understand totally.
And this morning I. Thank you. That was it. That was my, my talk. It's just too much. You know, West Tampa is a redheaded stepchild and that proves it right there. Done. Thank you.
If I could, you know, when we did the first TOD subcommittee, we, we talked to Calabrese, who's the, who now is retired head of the Cleveland system. And of course, if you have not seen what Cleveland had did, they, they had a four mile bus rapid transit, very similar to the way our east and west is now. And they had a lot more empty properties available for it. And they have an incredible robust purchasing program through their system, which makes a huge difference. That's because they have money in order to go in there and be able to purchase properties and then to make them TOD. It has helped, I think, come up with $4 billion worth of development all along that, that BRT. So that to me, I think is what we need to look at is how do we get more of these properties in our corridors that we can either purchase or partner with people in order to make transit affordable? Ms. Capina is absolutely correct. Even if you get out a little bit further away and it becomes more affordable, as long as you have that corridor that you can get into a job somewhere in the downtown area, it makes all the difference in the world. So thanks so much for the information and I wish I would have had this beforehand, but I know that you were probably typing it up just while you were walking in here. So, but thanks for doing it.
And I just wanted to let you know the fir, second week of April with the, with the council that I'm on, we're going to Nashville, which has a lot of, it has a lot of, yeah, it has a lot of similarities to Tampa in some ways.
Is it still legal to have BRT in Tennessee? Because they had outlawed it by the legislature. They tried to.
Well, I, we're going and we're going to see some projects and I can come back and let you all know those as well. With that, you have any more questions? I'm available. Thank you. No, thank you very much.
Nothing, sir, except that early voting ends on Sunday and we have an election on Tuesday. I'm not a self-interested party, but I think that it's important that everyone that is eligible to vote in the city of Tampa should go out and vote. And so I hope that they know it's open from 10 to 6 every day today, all the way through Sunday. And then of course, 7 to 7 on Tuesday, March 5th for, for the election for the next council and the next mayor. Thanks, Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Capina, I did see the information about early voting put out on social media several times. Yes, everyone, everyone should vote.
Okay, fix the call on Glen and Cordelia Street, please, before there's an accident. Because to go around the, the sign that says road closed, there's a ditch. And you have to maneuver between the closed sign and the ditch to get around the corner. Thank you. That's it for me.
Yes, I'd like to move to have a Tampa City Council commendation presented to Tampa Bay Best Buddies at their forthcoming to be scheduled buddies walk.
And I just wanted to join in the remarks on the election and just personally commend all my colleagues who are on the ballot for all your hard work while you continue to be city council members and especially commend the two gentlemen on the far right there for running a civil gentlemanly campaign. Oh, there you go.
Mr. Vera, we are planning on arm wrestling tonight at the, at our evening meeting, just for you to know.
But I did want to say. But I did want to say, just for the, the campaign you all have run as gentlemen and friends, I think it's a, it's a good example to us all. There you go. Pack money. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of their motion, so. We stand adjourned at 5:01.
5:01. Thank you.